Kingsville City Commission to order, it's Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. Commissioner Peck is trying to show me it's five fifty-nine, not six o'clock. It's six o'clock now. We generally start our meetings with pledges of allegiance and prayer for those who want to please stand.
Father, we ask that you be here with us tonight and always help guide us in our thoughts, in our words, in our actions, so that we may make decisions for the betterment of this community, the state, and the nation.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have two minutes to approve, the minutes of August twenty-fifth and August twenty-sixth. If we take those together, we might have an objection to that. Is there a motion?
So will.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion makes our Commissioner Peck was to approve the meetings, the minutes of the meetings of both August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, seconded by Commissioner Peck. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes, okay, it's six oh-one, we have one public hearing, we're gonna open up. It's a hearing on an ordinance amended in the city of Kingsville Code of Ordinances by amendment chapter fifteen, land use article three, subdivision sections fifteen dash three dash fifteen through fifteen dash three dash twenty-five, providing the platting procedure. That's you Cynthia.
That's me.
For how many more days?
Yeah. Oh, I'm not.
Getting short.
I'm still be around after that, so.
No.
All right, yes, this ordinance was one presented to you at the workshop on the eighteenth. Mr. Kell, who is a consultant, we identified three reasons for it. First was addressing deficiencies in the current code. The next was providing additional language to guide this public and staff in platting of land within the city. And then identified, very platting type, that it would be under use because of the number of fires. So, are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Cynthia, okay. All right, this is a public hearing, anybody that wants to speak on this subject, you know, you just come to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this subject. Well, Cynthia, I'm glad we're doing this, it's been a real, it's been a real issue from the beginning for me. It gives the, it's gonna give the developers a guide to go by, it's well-written, easy to understand, and I think it's gonna make us a lot more user-friendly, so it's a good deal.
That's what we wanna be, we wanna get some building.
There you go, there you go, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna close this meeting at six oh-three, and we'll go on to reports from commission and staff. Courtney, you have anything?
Yes, sir, just to let everyone know, our next meeting should be three weeks from now, on October the thirteenth. The deadline for agenda items is next Friday, October the third. And trash off is supposed to be, whether permitting this Saturday, from eight to twelve.
Okay. Anything else?
Charlie, I notice the guys are busier now with crosswalks, working with crosswalks. With that woman getting hit the other day. The only thing I would ask is maybe the police and the PD could start working, and I noticed that there's a lot more presence working, especially around the university, because I know the police are doing a better job too. Police and crosswalks and such, because people still don't know a crosswalk needs to stop, if there's a person out there. But the guys are busy, and thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Yes.
Charlie, I'm beginning a lot of complaints about potholes. And my excuse is due to the rains, so are we working?
Yes, sir, we've taken a little backseat on the roadway construction portion of. We're gonna do first street next, however, with the rains these two weeks, we've been hitting the potholes heavy on the major corridors. So you'll see them on Sixth Street, on the Corral and other major corridors, that these potholes are coming up. Again, the rains, while it's good, in construction terms, it's not too good.
Not over a street.
So we need some dry weather here for a little bit, just give me a couple of weeks. And I'll talk to the mother nature.
Thank you.
All right, again, the trash off is this Saturday, from eight to twelve, we take everything except for, what, just chemical waste?
Hazardous waste, household waste, cement, and breaking the ground.
Again, this Saturday from eight to twelve, you can bring it out, there's gonna be a lot of kids from the university, a lot of volunteers that'll help you unload your vehicles. It's gonna be down on Sixth Street, at our little park right there, next to, between Claybrook School and Corral right there. You can't miss it, there's gonna be a big line, a long line of cars. So it's a good opportunity, if you wanna clean something up around your house and get rid of it, it's instead of having to go to the dump, you can do it right here in town, it's a good, it's a great opportunity. Anything else? Okay, now we'll go to the public comments on or off the agenda of this opportunity, for anyone that wants to come up to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live, you have three minutes to talk about any subject that you wanna talk about. Okay, then we'll go to the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Peck is to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by both, by Judge Garcia. Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Peck, roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes. We'll go to the regular agenda, consider resolution approving the city of Kingsville Code of Ordinances, tax rule, roll pursuant to the Texas Property Tax Code. Whatever.
Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. The certified rule that we admitted, the net taxable amount was seven hundred and twenty-eight million, nine hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five, at our adopted rate of point eight four two two zero. The calculated levy is six million, one hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Anybody have a question about that?
I make a motion that we approve the tax rule.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to approve the tax rule as presented to us, seconded by Commissioner Peck. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes. Next item is consider final tax of the ordinance amended in the city of Kingsville Code of Ordinances, check the time ordered approved, providing for an increase in water rates and per rate study of one percent.
This was presented by Brady last, at our last council meeting, Commissioner Brady, sorry. And basically, it's as for the five-year study that was done, and it's a one percent increase in water rates that Brady was recommending. That one percent water rate increase will raise per generate about forty-four thousand dollars worth of additional revenue. The adopted budget do not factor in that one percent increase. And any of those CIP projects that we'll have coming up for the future is not affected by the current rates or the projected recommended one percent increase. So we do have the funding already established for anything that we've got in that budget this year. So it would be just a matter of adopting it to keep in line with the study that was done. And so it's important to, how do you want to handle that?
Any questions or comments about this?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Do you have an idea how much it would be for just the regular customer, how much that increase would be? You know, just the average?
If the regular bill is about seventy-two hundred dollars at one percent, it would cost a dollar. So, if a hundred dollars, ten percent would be ten dollars, so one percent would be about?
So your average citizen is about eighty to a hundred bucks?
Yeah, something similar to that.
Anything else?
I have one. I know the studies all show that we have to keep raising our rates and everything, and I just don't, I'm not a believer in that. I think we have to raise our rates, there should be a reason for it. And one percent, just to go with the study, just to raise the rates, just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem right, it's just...
Well, the study that's done is supposed to take a look at our capital projects coming up that we've slated that we need to do. And it's in order to set aside funding, so that when we get to that point of doing those projects, we'll have the money already, so that we don't have to take a big hit, like three or four, five percent. So it's trying to build up those reserves. And on the fund balance for the utility funds, we are spending that fund balance down. And so we're gonna be doing another five-year study, so at that point in time, based on the projects that you could approve, we'll want to, you know, reassess again if those rates need to increase or not.
And that's really a good reason, but do we ever have a surplus at the end of the years with our, any of our utility funds?
Always.
We've always had.
I think that's my point.
But at the same important time, if we hadn't had that surplus in those funds, we would not have been able to do the projects that we were doing. So it's all about managing our funds and keeping our fund balance as we're deemed to be, and then also getting it properly spent down. And we are doing that because of the fund balance at the end of fiscal year fifteen, we will have dropped our fund balance down to the three hundred thousand dollar range, whereas it's like five hundred thousand now. So we are spending on that fund balance, so this next study that we're gonna be doing is gonna be crucial to ensure that we maintain that level in our fund balance.
There's, I think there's several things that this study hasn't taken into account. On the arguing to do this, I know we're spending money on the pump house down here, approximately three hundred thousand is coming out of utilities. And we're gonna redo the building at the old high school, and that's another seven hundred thousand approximately. That's a million dollars in construction projects that are gonna, that were planted to bring out utilities. Plus, importantly, back on this, one of the things that, in negotiating the new water contract with South Texas Water Authority, because water costs more now, the three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're paying in water, we're getting less for it. And there's a push to increase that, and I suspect that that's something that we're gonna have to do. So there's a reason to do this. But on the other side, I don't think this study took into effect that we gained the water customers that we have, including the university and the air base, which are big customers that are gonna be buying a lot of water from us, and we're gonna be making a lot of money off of them. Plus, I don't think that it takes into consideration the growth that we're experiencing right now with the apartments behind IHOP and the properties of the university. So it kinda, kinda counterbalances itself. I mean, it's, you know, it's maybe, we ask a lot of our taxpayers, and this might be an opportunity that we can just say, okay, let's put it off a year and look at it when we do study. That's my opinion.
Right, and I totally agree with that, because the next five-year plan that we look at, we will take those other things into consideration to make sure that it does move out and that we are, you know, analyzing and looking at all the items that need to go into that production and analytical.
Forty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in the big scheme of things, probably not. But, you know, again, it's not a clean month in the past of the year. Okay, any other questions? All right, this is an action item. Motion made by Commissioner Garcia to approve this increase, seconded by Commissioner Fekels. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Peck?
No.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
No.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Now, next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended in the city of Kingsville Code of Ordinances by amendment chapter fifteen, land use article three, subdivision section fifteen dash three dash fifteen through fifteen dash three dash twenty-five, providing the platting procedure.
Yes, Commissioner, this is the same ordinance that we presented earlier in the public hearing, and was presented to you in the workshop, just an introduction.
Any questions?
I just have one comment, ma'am.
Yes.
When we're getting this information, I'm not sure who this is going to, but when we're getting this information on like this iPad, the places that are highlighted for the changes are so dark, you cannot see them, it looks like it's blackout, I'm not sure I can hear this blackout.
It is red, unfortunately.
Is there any way that when this gets done, that those of us who have iPads or computers or anything, that you can show up better?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we can send that to you before, because it is an introduction item, so we'll make sure that when you want, actually, we'll give it to you before you post it in the agenda, so you can have a nice chance to look at it and make sure it shows a dark green background, which would come across very well, so yes, we'll do that.
Any questions about this? If not, this is an introduction item, we can address this, I guess, at our next meeting, three weeks from now. Next item is consider approval of a preliminary flat entitled Sage, State Unit Two, for eleven point six eight six acres located on Farm Lot Ten, section two KT nine, empty on Seidra.
Yes, this property, it's in about twelve acres, they're dividing it into eight lots, roughly one and a half acres each. Face of Sage Road, it's on the north of Sage Road, east of Young, right across the Sage Road from Serenity Estates. It's something that the staff did recommend, and it's, the planning has only looked at this and voted five to one to approve it. I know it's difficult to see the little flat, and I bought the plans if somebody needs to look at the bigger version of it. This is a preliminary flat, so your flat shows the right way, the easements, but it doesn't show sewer and water, but there is city sewer and water out there for the Serenity Estates already. As far as the zoning around the property, of course, obviously, it's R one and R two to the south, to the east. It's agricultural to the west, it's agricultural, but really further west, there's some seawalk in the, to the north, it's agricultural.
That's way out of acres, and not, therefore, voting board, they're not, they're not. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, good question.
So will mayor?
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Peck is to approve this flat, seconded by Commissioner Peck. Any other comments? This is the second time we've done this, approved the flat out there, we were on the, what, the south side last time, now on the north side?
Right, and this is just the preliminary, they still have to bring in the final lap to go to P and D.
Okay. Well, that country out there is headed for this, so we need something, you know, to say. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes. Okay, next item is consider resolution approving changes to the entry-level requirements for the fire department under the city of Kingsville Service Commission.
Mayor, Commissioner, the fire chief requested a change to the civil service rules for the entry level, the minimum requirement. It was presented to the Civil Service Commission on September the fourth, and it was approved by them. The current rules indicate that the new rule change by the commission has to come before the city commission for approval before it can become actual rule. The change only affects one item, and it's in your memorandum in the packet. It just indicates that the individual to be eligible to test it must have the basic structure, fire suppression, firefighter certification already, before being, before taking the exam. Previously, it allowed up to a hundred and eighty days in which to acquire the certification, but the fire chief feels that it's more proving to have the certification to speak with and allow the individual to be able to test.
Okay.
And the fire chief is, and is here having questions.
Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Have we had any, anybody that's come across this and said, no, this is not what, you know, this is how Kingsville does it? That, is this not a good plan?
No.
No.
I'm not sure.
Which of you does?
Either one of you.
No, we have not had any moving forward.
I guess the better question is, is the union, I mean, they're not, they haven't raised any objections to that?
What we've discussed with the union is if this, if this doesn't work as far as requiring them to be firefighters before we hire them as firefighters, that we might go to an alternative system, but it would be budgetary issues as far as sending someone to an academy for six months. Which we haven't had.
Well, I think, I thought that's what you're getting at, so.
But they're, in the civil service meeting, they were willing to give this a try, and if it doesn't, we're gonna go back together and come up with another option. I think our problem has been recruiting, and so there's at least five or six academies around the state that we're gonna start, because people come out of those academies and they're looking for a job. And we're gonna have lots of housing here now for people, so.
Okay.
So we're gonna go out and try and recruit from these academies as they're coming out, fresh paramedic firefighters.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I'll try not to interrupt anybody. Sorry, Cynthia. You got one, Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner Garcia, do you have something you wanna?
The question that comes to my mind is, are we limiting ourselves, you know, in a big way, filling the billets that are becoming available? And how much time, time span is gonna be before we fill the stations? You know, waiting for somebody to finally decide to move to Kingsville, you know, from the graduating classes.
The last four people we hired, I mean, as soon as we had, we put out the notice, we were able to hire them within the thirty days or sixty days that we had to close. We were able to draw, basically, the word amount, firefighters that were working here knew other people that were certified. And so the last four people we hired were, had those certifications. So we've got two vacancies right now that we need to, well, as soon as we promote a captain, we have two firefighter vacancies that we'll need to fill.
Okay.
I have another question, as far as hiring people and those new hires going through the six-month training, have you had a lot of people drop out from that period of training? And then those that graduated from that period of training, have they been hired?
The new hires have a one-year probationary period. If you're asking if we've had people not complete the one year?
Right.
Like, no, they've completed the year, they've stayed here.
When I came here, we had two paramedics that had been hired, and they were not fire pilots. And so, but they were being paid, and coming to the station on their shifts, and they were taking an online fire academy. So they really only got two weeks of an academy, they go to a group camp, they call it, for two weeks straight where they prepare you to take the state exam. So you pack, what, Del Mar teaches in, six, is it six months?
Del Mar does six months.
They packed six months into two weeks. And so the issue is, is even when we bring in people like the people that we just got that are already certified firefighters and paramedics, it took us at least three to four months to get them evaluated and up to our skills and protocols for being a paramedic, where they can go out as the lead paramedic. And that's for the new people that are already certified. So if we hire somebody and we pay them for six months, well, it's one thing if we hire them to go to the rookie school in Del Mar for six months, we might be able to use them a few hours a week, but because of, you know, our requirements in FLSA, we run into some issues there, but I mean, we might be able to use them a few hours a week as a paramedic. But for the most part, they're gone for that six months. And then the other issue that we have with this is that if we pay to put someone through an academy, whether it's online or they go to Del Mar, then after they get their probation, they get their year in or whatever, then they may be going, you know, fine for Corpus or whatever, so we pay for training for personnel. And then, but this is a common practice in small departments around the state. Usually, small departments don't put people through academies anymore. They just hire people that are out there already certified, because they know they're eventually gonna lose some of those people to bigger, higher-paying departments.
I have a final question on, if you hire somebody that's already qualified, they're still in your one-year probationary period, correct?
Yes, sir.
Whether qualified or not?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Does the firefighter has to have an EMT and also a firefighting license to re-employ it or?
Well, under the old contract, you had to get your firefighter certification in a hundred and eighty years. Because we were just trying to get paramedics, because the primary emphasis was on the ambulance.
What if you have a person that already has the firefighting, went to the academy, graduated, but he doesn't have his EMT? Will you hire him?
In the state of Texas, you'd have to have your EMT, be a certified firefighter, they tie the two together. It's the paramedic, because we run advanced life support ambulance, we have to have that paramedic, which is now a two-year college degree. And most places, unless you take your crash works with the Corpus, or Houston paramedic chain.
Any other questions? Action item.
So will mayor?
Motion made by Commissioner Peck is to pass this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Fekel?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes, next item is consider resolution authorized the mayor to enter to a water supply contract with the South Texas Water Authority. Courtney?
Yes, sir. What you have in the packet is, it's supposed to be a template for what the authority would like to try for at least a year. It actually can run a little longer, because it might take that. They're trying to have the city take water under a certain bell curve, certain, certain months. We would still stay within the three hundred fifty thousand dollars, but just take less in certain months and more in others in order to help them try and maintain the corneal residual within the forty-two inch transmission line as it comes out of Bishop. And so the price in the contract is still the same for the city, which is already currently budgeted. The contract would be for roughly a year, but it could last longer than a year. It just says up until September thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen, or until sixty days' notice is given. And there is a sample curve attached to the contract, but parties both acknowledge that that might vary a little depending on, you know, what's needed. They do corneal residual reading studies. But it is for a surface water supply contract, and, let's see, the, I guess I was looking if there's any terms that are really that different. There is a water tank and three pumps currently at the authority's Kingsville Station. And they have gone out for bonds about two years ago to get a new tank up there, so that the size would be smaller, and then to change out the sizing of the pumps. And so one of the things that is required before that can be done is for the authority to have a water supply contract in place with the city. They've tried to get those projects approved, but TCQ is holding up approval on those until the contract is in place. So this should help with that as well. Once those facilities are built and certified, then the authority would be presenting some kind of transmittal documents so that the city could take ownership of those assets. Currently, we're already maintaining the pumps that are there at that station. The handling charge is the same in this agreement as it was in the prior agreement. The authority adopts that yearly, and that didn't change from last year to the upcoming year. The other cost involved for the rate of water is what the authority passes through to its customers from the city of Corpus Christi. So whatever the city of Corpus Christi charges the authority, then they just pass that straight through to their customers. And it's likely that that will be going up this coming year. But no one really has any control over that. And that's about it. I don't know if you have any other questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Sure.
You mentioned that the city currently maintains the pumps.
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, once we have this transmittal take place, then we're, we're going to continue to maintain the pumps.
Yes, they're, they would become our assets.
Our assets. Now, you didn't mention the, the tank. Currently, uh, we do not maintain the tank.
That is correct.
So we're, once that transmittal takes place, we'll, we'll be maintaining that tank.
We will have a new tank. So it, and it is a new tank.
Yeah.
It would be a new tank. So, you know, it would just be regular maintenance and not inheriting something that needs a lot of work. But that would be something, then, that would need to go into the water rate study because that would be additional assets that the water customers would be looking at in the future. But it would probably, it, based on how long it takes to actually get it approved and then constructed and then approved for usage, probably not within this program.
If I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct, they have to be inspected every couple of years or something like that?
I, I'm not sure what the maintenance protocol is for that. Probably something the public works could better adjust it. But they, they would present us with transmittal documents. We would come back before you with an action item to have the city accept those facilities.
Courtney, is, is the Texas agency still trying to make the authority reduce the pipeline as far as the dimensions are concerned, or is that, that they clear that?
It's, it's, um, it's still kind of pending, actually. The administrative law judge went in the authority's favor with regard to the maintenance of coramine residual within all of the 26 or more miles of the 42-inch transmission line. Um, and they went before the TCEQ, and in that hearing, they had one for and one against. And so they said, well, y'all work, try and work it out with staff. And so this pilot program whereby we would take water at different...
Different times?
Volume, volumes at different months is kind of part of helping them along with getting their issue of TCEQ resolved internally.
I'm assuming that then the city of Ricardo, we can see, they're not consuming as much water and is probably was forecasted or projected, uh, in order to alleviate that problem where it puts us in a bind that we have to, you know, buy that water. And now they're telling us, you know, you've got to use it in a certain time of the year and we can reduce the chemicals. We continue and it's a perpetual game of, of assisting all the, all the neighbors or whatever at the expense of the Kingsville taxpayers.
Well, Ricardo's been taken out of the equation. They built a loop around the entire line, so they don't come through Kingsville anymore. And that's part, and that exacerbates the problem.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm...
If it was all coming through Kingsville, you would, you'd use that 42-inch line a little bit more.
Well, I think they still draw out of the line, they don't go through the Kingsville system, but they still draw out of the line south of Bishop. And that's apparently where the residual issue...
That's where they ran the problem?
They ran the problem. So it's, I haven't heard or seen any empirical data that, that says that that is attributable to this anymore so that it's just the volume of water combined from the city. And Ricardo coming through the line is not sufficient every single day of the year to keep the coramine residual at levels that it needs to be.
Yeah, I would just think of this as, that's, you know, basically our city, in this, in the county. Maybe the county could subsidize us in a way, shape, or form to alleviate that problem.
You want to have a joint meeting where you talk about that?
Well, we can.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Is there any benefit to the Kingsville, City of Kingsville community to do this contract?
Yes, ma'am. The city of Kingsville, over the course of time, has paid the lion's share for the 42-inch pipeline. And not just the city, but its taxpayers. So the city and its taxpayers have paid for the lion's share of the pipeline. And with regards to that, it is definitely beneficial to have a secondary water source in the event that something happens from the reservoir with withdrawal.
Right. And, but I think my question is, this contract, not the secondary water source, and the taxpayers, of course, are the city of Kingsville. But does this contract buy the same amount, spending the same amount of less water? How's it going to benefit?
Well, at this point in time, we'd be theoretically still being able to purchase the same amount of water that we did last year for $350,000. It's only when, or if the pass-through charge from the city of Corpus Christi changes that we might not be able to pull as much water from them for the same rate. Uh, but the benefit to this, having it in place, is that once the contract is in place, then it would be more difficult for TCEQ to go after either party to the contract for not having, selling and buying contract without having a water contract in place. And then also, it would facilitate the development of the new water storage tank and the pumps. And I believe that those are things that are beneficial to the city's overall water supply system and the calculation with regards to the pressure per customer.
Any other questions? Courtney, that the, this contract, all our sister cities that are, are also customers of South Texas, they're, they're getting the same contract, are they?
I, I believe that our contract is going to be the, the template that there's work off of because they draw off of a different place in the line, the 42-inch transmission line. They won't have the, they'll shape her requirement.
Okay.
But they will have a similar agreement with regard to the taking over of certain facilities.
Same, same water rate?
Yes, same water rate.
This also helps a couple of the customers because the TCEQ's questioning their, their water.
Yes, they're pending enforcement actions and they're trying to work these.
Okay. That's all there.
Well, the mayor, all of the wholesale customers, as I understand it, are, are going to be acquiring the pumps and everything.
Yeah. So that's, that's where the, there might be, it'd be a different cost because of that. But as long as our wa, water rate's the same, that's all I'm concerned about. Okay.
Make a motion to approve resolution, as they did in item number nine.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pena to approve this water contract, seconded by Commissioner Pecos. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pecos?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peña?
Yes. With that, with that, that's all the business of the city. That's your turn.